Well, we'll make it official. We'll give it 10 more seconds. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the town council meeting of December the 9th. Would you please call the roll?
Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Valerie DePaolo.
Here.
William Diedzik.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Paul Chaplinski.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
Here.
Would you all please stand for the prayer?
Heavenly Father, tonight we pray for direction and courage. We need your help to define our path and courage to walk it. We ask your continued blessing upon Southington and her people. Amen.
Amen. I'm going to ask Madison and Riley, could you come forward a little? Madison and Riley, you're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance because I understand you know how to do that, is that correct? Okay, everybody, Riley and Madison. Go ahead.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the reprieve and justice for all.
Great job, girls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion for the minutes of last meeting, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. Item number three, appointment of town attorney.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Jeremy Taylor for the Southington Town Attorney.
Do you have a second?
I second that.
Call the roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Unfortunately, I do have to make this comment in light of the events leading up to tonight. And I did write it down just because I feel I need to be clear. I have always and will continue to always pride myself in being open, honest, and transparent with any issue that comes before this council. I believe our residents deserve nothing less and furthermore believe it is our duty to bring to light any indiscretion in a public manner. I was a little concerned after our selection meeting on Friday that the town attorney position was becoming a political appointment, not because of the fact that it was again a political appointment as it has been in the past, but the fact that it was a political appointment under the guise of it being a formal process. I cannot vote in favor of the recommended candidate, not because I don't support the recommended candidate, but because I do not feel it was a fair and open process and I do not feel he was the most qualified candidate. There were no interviews, there was no rubric or formal assessment criteria. All we had to go on was based upon the submitted resumes of the applicants. Although all the concerns raised about the most qualified candidate were addressed at our meeting, it became clear to me then that those concerns were not truly the deciding factor. Vicky and I left things Friday that we would speak to our respective caucuses and ask for their input. However, when I received the call, I was not asked for our input. I was not asked where my caucus stood on the process. Rather, I was told the direction the majority party was taking. Then today, we received an email from the chair informing all of us that the decision was unanimous. I am not sure where that came from, but to be clear, the decision is not unanimous.
Is that it, Chris? Is that what I wanted to say?
That's it.
Good.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
May I also bring it up for discussion? I do appreciate the process, although maybe it's not as formal as maybe a future process will be, I do appreciate the fact that the chairwoman took this up and did accept resumes from the public. And I'm actually astonished that Councilman Palmeri is opposed to this process when in 2017, there was absolutely no process and it was simply a political gift to a person who ran for council.
Okay.
So, thank you to the members who reviewed the resumes and the qualified candidates who put their name in the hat. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that want to speak?
Madam Chair, just briefly. I did recuse myself from the subcommittee. And I did that because I felt that that was ethical and I felt that there would be, I was hoping that there would be full transparency. And I think that that's the expectation that, you know, the first meeting, it was tabled. So, it appeared to me that this wasn't going to be a political appointment. It appeared to me that it was going to be a process, which I thought was great. And I thought that that was a great start to the current term. And so, if there was going to be a process, I would have liked to have seen that process be, you know, some, not just applications, but interviews and maybe some kind of a rating and, you know, a little bit more substantial. And I understand what Councilman Lombardi is saying. I respect that. I think when it was put out into the paper that this was going to be different, I think people in town had that expectation as well. And I think it was a good thing. So, I just feel like this process maybe was lacking a bit. And that's where, you know, that's where I am, you know, I don't know if I'm disappointed, but it was the, you didn't call it a, you didn't do the appointment. You said, "Let's make it a process." So, let's have a process that is just not lacking, but more substantial. And let us have, I think, I feel like Councilman Pulis and I didn't have a chance to have some input on it.
Let me just explain the process that we had. First of all, we had five candidates, all very competent, all very well-qualified. And I would not, I never expected to have interviews because we know these attorneys, all good people. Now, as far as saying this has become political, it's the farthest thing that's happened. The last time I was chairman, I appointed a town attorney other than my own party because I felt it was the right thing to do. Tonight, we are appointing an attorney because it's the right thing to do, not because of political persuasion, Mr. Palmeri, not because of some hidden agenda. I wanted to open it up and give those attorneys, first of all, their respect after serving our town for years and years. We know them. We knew every attorney that applied. And we know their work and we know how good they are. All five of them could have sat up here. The attorney that is chosen tonight by the majority, you were not home when I called. I told you I was going to call. You weren't home. I said to you, "Our caucus feels that we're going with this attorney." For whatever the reason was, you weren't there. I couldn't discuss it with you. You didn't call me back. I would have been very open with you, Chris. And so, as far, I'm sorry to say, our caucus decided very clearly that this candidate, for whatever reason, and I'm not going to get into specifics tonight because I have too much respect for those candidates that put in their names. They are highly respected individuals and I'm not going there. I am not going down that political trail. The candidate that is coming in tonight, whether you want to support him or not, is up to you, all. Then you make this political. Because the candidate that we are choosing was by far the one that would fit in most appropriately. And that's the end. Chris, if you have anything else, I'll give you your due diligence. Go ahead, if you want to say anything.
No, you know, I just want to echo that. I think that intentional or not, where we are is with a flawed process. And the intent might have been a process.
Well, it may be.
Allow me to finish, please. The intent might have been a process, but there were flaws in it. And if we can agree that this is no different than a political appointment that has been made when you appointed the attorney in the past.
It has nothing to do with politics. No, I will not agree to that.
I'd happily support the candidate if we'd agree to that.
The person's political background was not even discussed. Nobody discussed it. That was, the political tenor of the candidate was not even discussed.
Well, if it's going to be disguised, if the appointment's going to be disguised in a process.
You can define it any way you want, Mr. Pulis.
It's just for the record, I can't support that, not because of the candidate, but because of the process and how it's handled.
Yes, please, go ahead, Paul.
So, we had an initial meeting where the chairperson outlined what the process would be, that there was going to be, there was going to be a list, there was going to be an opening, people could apply, and that the resumes were going to be reviewed by the committee. There was no discussion in the past about an interview. The chairperson gave an update at the last meeting that there would be an appointment this meeting. Prior to the decision being made, did the three of you raise an objection about the process before that?
We, we.
I don't think you did. I don't think you did. I don't think you raised an objection about the process. So, I find it appalling that you would come here and you would use political motivation to smear the person that's been chosen.
That's not true.
When before today, you had no, you had no beef about the process. And now today, you have a process. I'm sorry, I think it's, I think it's appalling.
Okay, well, that's not true. Councilman Chaplinski, hold one moment, Madam Chair.
No, I think, I'm going to call this right now. I think we've discussed it enough and.
Excuse me, and I would like to respond to two other comments as well.
We should be able to respond.
We have every right to respond.
Absolutely.
First of all, to Tom, you're right. But Tom, here's the difference. I never, we never said anything different than it was a political appointment because that's how it was done in the past. I did not say it was anything other than a political appointment two years ago. So, just to be clear, I never said anything other than that. Okay? So, that's to your point. And Vicky, you made it clear to me, not once, but twice in the phone call, that you were not asking my input. You were telling me the direction you were going in.
I was saying that the majority was in agreement.
We're all set, Chris, so this is what we're doing. That's your exact words, and I can play the message back if you don't believe otherwise. That's what you told me.
I'm certainly not going to go there, Chris.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment? I believe that the candidate was chosen based on criteria that's the best for Southington, their ability to do the job, spend the time, and represent the town in the best way. The candidates, like Victoria said, were all qualified. We had concerns as a group as to how much effort, how much time it would take to be put in. And again, I went in with an opinion that was different and I had a discussion and I changed my opinion. And my opinion is that this is not a political appointment. This is what's best for Southington. Has nothing to do with a party.
I just want to reply to Mr. Chaplinski's comments. And the fact of the matter is, we were told there was going to be a process. We were told that, you know, this is a new thing, we're not sure of the process. I have hired people before, okay? And when I hire people, there's a rubric, there's a discussion, there are criteria that are clearly outlined. Now, I can understand that since it was new, that you might not have had all the details defined in the process. But when Councilman Palmeri came back to me and said that the meeting on Friday seemed broken, that decisions were, that his input wasn't being taken into account, that seems like a broken process. So, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing that there wasn't a process.
He felt that way because he had every opportunity to speak. He spoke freely. We had a difference of opinion, a different reason why. So, I mean, I don't know what else he wanted to have input, more input in, Chris. You certainly spoke a great deal that, that made.
Well, I didn't say I didn't have an opportunity to speak. I agree, I had an opportunity to speak, but.
All right. You know, I, we may not agree, and maybe the process was flawed. Maybe we could have made it more rigid or whatever. I did not want that. I wanted to respect the attorneys that put in their application, their resume as highly qualified. And all of them, every one of them, could have sat here. What my decision in terms of who I felt was strongest, had to do with their availability, the fact that they've worked closely with the town. And that's where my decision came in. Now, other people had similar or different opinions, but the bottom line is that apart from any political party, apart from any political party, and some of those that applied are already affiliated with the town and doing attorney work with the town, all agree to continue. It has, apart from any political party, this individual was chosen. And so, there is a motion on the floor.
In a second.
There is a second on the floor. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I will call the motion. Please call the roll.
Del Santo.
Yes.
DePaolo.
No.
Diedzik.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Morelli.
Yes.
Palmeri.
No.
Pulis.
The process was flawed, no.
Chaplinski.
Absolutely.
Triano.
Yes, by all means. Attorney Jeremy Taylor, would you come and take your seat here as? I want to thank also Attorney Rick Adone for spilling in for us. Thank you so much, Alex. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Councilmatic Communications, I want to first congratulate the committee for White Christmas in the village and the community, White Christmas in the community. It was a wonderful event. I was down in Plansville. I know where Mr. Diedzik was. I know that Chris and Val and Chris were also down here. I know that you were here for the openings. And it was a wonderful event. There were a lot of folks down in Plansville while I was there. I see Dawn is here. Congratulations, Dawn. You did a great job. Awful lot of people had a good night. I don't know if anyone else would like to speak on it. It certainly was, I'm hearing great things about it. Yes, go ahead, Chris.
If I could just tag on to that, I really want to thank our Public Works Committee. They did a phenomenal job. Both, well, a lot of town staff, but especially the Public Works, especially with the seasonal lighting that they have on both Plansville and downtown Southington. So, it was a great night. Happy to be there to bring the two communities together.
Excellent, very good. Anybody else?
If I can just pat my staff on the back for a second. As you know, we had the snowfall, so that was a very truncated time period. So, Chris hit the nail right on the head is that these guys only had a very short period of time to get both greens ready to go because they were plowing with snow from Sunday until Tuesday. So, great job by the staff and certainly the Highway Parks Administration.
Okay, thank you so much, everybody. Again, Dawn, thank you and your whole community. I know you did an awful lot of work. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Councilmatic Communications? Yes, Chris?
I also just, in light of what we just talked about, want to thank the Public Works Committee and Nat and her crew, already having snow. And I know it was tough with the way it happened over really two-day periods. So, I sent her an email privately, but I want to acknowledge and thank the staff in the Public Works Department and our contractors that we hire as well for doing a great job to keep the roads safe for all of us. So, I appreciate that.
Yep. Anybody else?
Once again, if I can follow Chris because there's going to be a question that comes up probably by the public or someone here. We finished a portion of Zone 1 again. So, we hope that this snow-eating fog over the next two days will take care of the snow. We hope not to get a lot of snow Wednesday morning and we hope to finish off Zone 1, which is the second pass on Zone 1, hopefully Thursday and Friday and maybe early next week. So, we almost got the leaves done, but we will get them done and looks like their long-range forecast will allow us to do that.
Madam Chair, I have one more thing.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry again, but I need to voice our concerns about something from tonight. We caucused and discussed the agenda, as I know you do as well. But we're disappointed in an agenda item that did initially appear on tonight's meeting. It's now gone from the meeting and why the chair decided to put it on initially. Although the attorney for the project has now requested a continuance, we did not understand the urgency for putting the Lanning Street Sewer Project on the agenda for discussion and worse action this evening. It was not even addressed with the new sewer committee, as is the normal process. We wonder why the urgency. So, after reading the story in today's paper, our caucus became very deeply concerned about the appearance of a political favor. We will not be a part of anything that appears to be a quid pro quo. Although we are now being told that this issue will be continued and potentially follow the correct process and be referred to the new sewer committee first, we wonder why it took exposure from the media to get there. We now question the appropriateness of even having the discussion at the sewer committee until after political campaign contributions are investigated and resolved. A controversy like this is completely unprecedented in Southington. We must now request that we get an opinion from the State Elections Enforcement Commission and outside legal counsel before we do anything further on this matter. We feel strongly that these actions are necessary in order to maintain public trust.
I would just say that I did not take anything off the agenda. We received, Mark, when did we get that?
Last, yesterday.
Yesterday. We received the letter from the attorney for the client who said that he is out of the country and that he would not be able to be here for his client and that he would, like this matter, move to January. And so, that's where we are now. Nobody removed anything. It's on the request of the attorney. We are being as transparent as we possibly can. There's no big hidden agenda on it, Chris. It's just that the attorney requested and he is the attorney for the client. And the client will not be here and neither will the original presentation be done, at the request of their attorney. Has nothing to do with it.
And that's fine. However, we would still request that the State Elections Enforcement Commission take a look in light of the, in light of what's, the issues that came to light in today's front page of the Record Journal. We would request that regardless of what the request is from the attorney, that the State Elections Enforcement Commission and potentially outside legal counsel take a look at this before we do anything further with the matter in light of what was in today's paper. And it was published online Saturday night.
I didn't read it. What is the actual allegation?
Well, I mean, it's, if you pick up today's Record Journal, you can see it, but "Campaign Donors Have Ties to Developer." So, that's the headline and I'm not going to get into the whole story, but it's right in today's paper. If you haven't read it, I'd encourage you to read it, but we have some deep concerns based upon information uncovered in the article. So, I'd hope that you would consider the request that we're making.
Well, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree with Councilman Palmeri that, but I do have a little bit of, I'm confused because if there was a mention of something illegal, are we, maybe this could be a first task for our town attorney. Are we going to, how long do we have to wait and see if there were something? Because I don't think the article mentioned that there was anything illegal. It just mentioned that there was campaign contributions. So, I mean.
But that's why I said the State Elections Enforcement Commission.
Right, right. But how long are we going to wait? Like, did that article say that something was illegal? Are we going to wait six months, a year? Or are you talking like two weeks or a month?
I think it's concerning that we're even potentially continuing the conversation in light of what was unveiled in today's paper.
Mr. Lombardi.
But does the article say? I read it, but I don't recall if there was mention of wrongdoing. So, I guess we can, I guess as a council, maybe we can have the town attorney look into the matter if there was a wrongdoing and maybe reach out to the state elections of.
I mean, Madam Chair, may? Yep. I just, I think for our own protection, all the councilors on the dais, we just want to make sure that people have an, like, that this has an opportunity to be checked out by, there's claims in here about campaign contributions and where they're coming from. And before I vote on something.
Sure.
I would want to make sure that everything was clear for our own protection. And so.
So, as Chris mentioned, it just came out, is it today's, right? Today's paper?
It was online over the weekend, but it was Saturday. It came out online.
I saw it this morning. And so, it's brand-new information coming forward and we're all just digesting it and looking at it. I think Tom Lombardi is correct. I don't think there was any allegation of criminal activity at all. I think it would be better to wait until.
Let me see that article.
Did you want to see it?
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, just to be, we're not going to let the Record Journal control our agenda, are we?
Of course.
No, but we want to be careful about public perception and how people perceive us. So, I'm not saying that, I'm not accusing anyone or anything of happening that was wrong, but I just want to make sure that all information is clear before any of us on this dais vote because we, people can start making assumptions and we don't want to have that perception as a council.
Well, the way it looks right now is that it's going to be continued to a meeting in January. At that time, we'll see if there's been any sort of further action being taken and we'll be able to get some clarification and give it time. There is no big rush on this. We'll take it step by step. And should we feel collectively that it needs to go somewhere else, we will. If we feel that it has, that there's no reason to take it any further, we won't. But Mr. Del Santo, you're absolutely right. Before we move anywhere, let's give it some time. Let's see. Bill is just reading it for the first time. So, my suggestion is that we follow the table and then before we proceed further, we will have more information on it and we will take the next step. Bill, did you read it? Did you want to make any statement?
No, I just, I'm not going to comment because I didn't, reading from the article, I originally thought they were leveling some charges against us, but now that I read that, I mean, it's just reporting facts, facts, so I don't have a problem with it.
All right. So, okay, Chris, I think that kind of leaves it there.
And that's what I'm saying. I think I don't understand the urgency for it and why don't we.
No urgency tonight at all.
I know, but it was initially, and in fact, it was, you were asked why it was still on the agenda in light of this. And again, it's fine, it's not on the agenda tonight. I said that, I said that in my statement.
And you notice also, I did say in the article that I was going to let the agenda stand. If they were coming tonight, I was going to let them do their presentation. But I said in the article, "I'm not sure where it's going to go from there," because I wasn't ready to say, "Well, we're going to take action tonight." Because it just came out in the Record Journal. I want to make sure that we have an understanding of what was said, the ramifications of what was said, and also the legality of it all. So, I take it very seriously. I always have. And so, it is not on tonight for action or for presentation. So, before we proceed with it, we will have some time to digest it and to look at the ramifications of it and then decide what we're going to do as a council. And then we'll go with it from there.
And that's part of what I requested. I just don't understand why we couldn't have an outside commission look into it as well if we're talking about campaign donations.
I'm not ready to move in that direction this evening. It just came out. So, we all need to look at it a little further and I'm sure it's not the end of the story.
As long as, and I think you said this, as long as we're not doing anything further with it until after we get maybe some more information.
Yes, well, we certainly, it's been pulled off by, not by me, but by the attorney for the client. And so, until we hear back from them and we have more time to look at the situation and maybe talk about, are there legal issues here or not? You know, people have certain freedoms and I don't want to get back and forth in the article, but I do want to just say, "Tonight, we're not doing anything with it. I'm not in any hurry." But when the attorney gets back, I'm sure he will address us. So, we'll go with it from there. Thank you very much. All right. Any other Councilmatic Communications? Tom?
Mike, that's okay.
Mike, yeah. No, I didn't know, I was looking at him. I was in call with Tom.
You guys kind of look alike, so.
Yeah, right. Before and after, some diet, maybe. So, the only thing I want to bring up is that we had our first Public Works meeting last week and it came out that the fire department and the water department is, needs Southington's help with fire hydrants. If everyone could adopt a fire hydrant, if you're driving by and you see a fire hydrant clogged up with snow, if you could please clear the fire hydrant, it saves lives. There are some fire hydrants that are older and if they're buried in snow, they could actually freeze up. And that's what they're most concerned about. So, if you're driving by during a storm, if you have a fire hydrant on the road, my boys know that we have fire hydrants on our road. We just go out and we try to clear them as we can. So, if we can all, we need the public's help. There's, you know, over 1,500 fire hydrants in town, so they need to be cleared.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Yes.
I just have one piece of information I'd like to share out. I couldn't attend the Public's Work Meeting last Wednesday, but because I spent the evening at the Bushnell Center for the Performing Arts where all of the district teachers of the year were honored, including Southington's Heather Allenbeck.
Uh-huh.
And I had an opportunity to see her in the audience and, and talk with her and see her backstage before she met the Commissioner of Education and some representatives from the State Board of Education. It was a beautiful night. She, it was great to see a Southington teacher honored. And if any of anybody's children have Mrs. Allenbeck, make sure to congratulate her. She's really an exceptional educator in our town.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hey, Chris, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. Chris, didn't Jennifer Burbank, who was a Southington resident, didn't she also get Teacher of the Year Award for West, West Hartford, I believe?
This is interesting. So I was in a reception before the event for the semifinalists. And a woman approached me and when you have those situations where you kind of recognize someone, but you're not sure. And she said, hi, Chris, it's Mrs. Burbank, who was my teacher back at DePaulo Middle School.
Oh, okay.
Junior high school years ago.
Sure.
And I said, well, what are you doing here? You, you must be retired by now. Because she's in her eighties, I think. She's like, oh, my daughter is a semifinalist for this, was a semifinalist for this award and she, and she's being honored tonight. And I said, well, it must be something in the Southington water that the great teachers in Southington...
It's a great honor for Jennifer Burbank. She was a Southington resident to be considered as one of the, the finalists.
I didn't know she was a Southington resident.
Yes, oh yeah. Yeah, yeah. I grew up with, with Jen. Yeah, for sure.
Excellent. Awesome. There is a sign up sheet going around for the town council. We're going to be at Stop and Shop on Saturday, ringing the bell for Salvation Army and helping Janet Mellon out at Community Services. Stop by and say hello and maybe put a little bit in the bucket.
Right. And Mr. Pluitt's laid it down, so there's some competition. So I'll be calling everyone I know to come out between nine and 11 on Saturday morning.
Okay.
Do your grocery shopping then.
We'll keep tabs on it.
We got a bat going. We'll talk about the wager.
All right. Definitely, we'll figure it out.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give a quick, a couple of, a couple of announcements. A quick shout out to Mark Ramsey and the Leaf Program. During Thanksgiving, this was the first year that I knew about it myself, but they did a, a $40 Thanksgiving basket, if you will. And, and it was just fantastic. I went down there, I met with Mark, got my package and, and it was just a fantastic thing. And I think a lot of people in the community didn't even realize that that goes on. So next year, I think we will promote it a little bit more for them, but it's really a fantastic program and he does a great job over there. So thank you to the whole Leaf Program. Secondly, the, I spoke to the 2019 Apple Harvest Festival Coordinator today, Dave LaPray, and have asked him to come before the council at, I believe it's going to be the first meeting in January. He seemed okay with that. There's a slight chance it might be the second meeting in January. But I, I've asked him to give a financial results summary to the council for the 2019 Apple Harvest Festival. And Councilman Palmeri and myself will be having our first Apple Harvest Meeting on Wednesday of this week. And Chris will report to the council at the next meeting because I, I'm unable to attend on Wednesday. But as we discussed at our last meeting, the Apple Harvest Committee will be discussing the Coordinator and Assistant Coordinator position. So there will be some Apple Harvest announcements at our next council meeting. Lastly, I want to thank everyone in advance for their continued support for the great event that goes on every year. And unfortunately, the team politicians has been very, very lacking. And you all know what I'm talking about. There, there's been some good donations, especially I know Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Misselli has always been a contributor, but the 2020, yes, 2020 YMCA Polar Plunge will be held on January 20th, I'm sorry, January 18th at 1:00 PM. So this is the year where team politicians is gonna have a lot of participation. I'm gonna send an email out to the Town Council, Planning and Zoning, and Board of Finance. The Board of Ed has their own team, but it's just a fantastic event in town. It's a fun event and it's a great way to raise, raise money for underprivileged kids so that they can attend camp in the summer. So if you haven't been down there, it's a, it's a great, great time. So thank you all. And, and I think it's, I found it kind of funny or, I don't know, convenient that Mr. Chaplinsky has a business trip planned that day. So, but thank, thank you all for your support with this endeavor.
Thank you. That's it. Again, Mr. Chaplinsky?
Just really briefly, a quick update that this Saturday is the YMCA and the Mill Foundation for Kids charity event where there's gonna be free sleigh or hay rides with horses around the YMCA Camp Sloper. There's also going to be Mr. and Mrs. Claus there. Folks are asked to make a toy donation or a $10 donation when they attend, but it's a great opportunity to bring the kids out and have a little bit of fun on the weekend. It's 11 o'clock AM to 1 o'clock PM this Saturday at YMCA Camp Sloper.
Terrific. Is that it, everybody? Okay, very good. Report on special committees. Bill, would you bring us up to date on sewer, please?
Sure. So it used to be a nice quiet issue. We have not actually met yet. We have our first meeting next Thursday. My understanding is that the, the item on the agenda is not going forward. However, I'm not sure, some of you may be aware, there was an issue with the Blatchley Pump Station. So I'm going to be making a motion tonight to add Item C New Business, a resolution at the request of the town manager. So unless anyone wants to discuss A1 on sewer more, I make a motion to, make a motion to add on a new business Item C, which is a motion to add a resolution in connection with the Blatchley Pump Station.
I'll second.
Before we move the motion, however, I do want Keith, if you could come up, where are you, Keith? I saw you moving that way, to kind of give an overview. Maybe some of us have not...
Actually, the, the motion is to add to the agenda. So when we do that motion first, then it's on the agenda. Then we go back to the sewer report. Keith will give his report on that one.
Oh, okay. Very good. So, thank you, Mark. So we're adding it to the agenda. The motion is to add it to the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It is added as Item C under New Business.
Well, Keith is working the, you want me to look at here? Keith, you got it over there.
Yeah, if you can do it. For some reason, it doesn't look like my touch.
All right. Well, Keith is getting ready. As you all saw the emails I sent to you between Friday and as late as Sunday, we had a difficult time at the Blatchley Pump Station. First, I want to say that this is a catastrophic failure of the station. It cannot be saved. You all know that. Keith is coming to us now to see how we're gonna remedy that. But let me, let me first go back by saying thank you to the entire staff. Peter and everyone at the Sewer Department did a great job. There was no ancillary damage done to any of the houses in the area, but the station itself is, is a total loss. We're using it right now as a wet pit. So this is a station that, for better or for worse, we're gonna replace anyway. It's already, you've already approved it in your capital plan. We are gonna bond it this spring. We obviously can't wait that long. So that's what the resolution was. I will, I'll be modifying and reading it when we get to that point. I put a figure in there which is actually higher than we need, which is good news, but I wanted to get that number out, which was the number I have in my capital budget. But Keith will explain to you that the numbers could be a little less than that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Chair. So on Friday morning, about 2:30 in the morning, the Sewer Department received a high alarm for the Blatchley Pump Station. And we actually had an issue last April, so we put an alarm in the first manhole that was immediately upstream of the station and that alarm was the one that triggered. So what happened was the, well, let me, let me skip down a little bit to, this is, this is what the pump station looks like. It's a ejector type pump station. It doesn't actually have pumps. It has two 50 gallon drums that alternating, they fill up and then once they're full, there's air compressors in there and the compressed air ejects the 50 gallons of sewage up into the force main. So what happened was one of the 50 gallon drums actually burst. So sewage, what normally this, all this equipment is dry, this pump station flooded with sewage. So all the electronics, all the electric motors, the compressors, everything is just absolutely ruined. So there's no recovering from it. The pump station was built in 1973, so they don't even make parts for this yet, you know, for us to repair it even if we wanted to. This was slated to be taken out of service and it just, bad timing that we didn't get there first. So what we did is we called in our guys with the VAC truck and they kept shuttling material to the plant. Then we called in Kovacs and he's the contractor that worked on the South End Pump Station. We know that he has pumps on hand. So we contacted him and we've set up a pump and we've converted this into a wet pit. Not what it was intended for, but that's what it's working right now. So we have a pump in here. We have alarms on the pump. We have alarms on the manhole as well. And our guys know that if an alarm goes off, they have to respond with the, the VAC truck. So right now, we're operating on sort of like an emergency basis. We've contacted the DEP. We've notified them that we're on bypass. I have a meeting at the plant tomorrow for a construction update and Steve Mulo from the DEP will be there. So we'll give him more of an update tomorrow as to what we're doing. Right now, we're not under any consent orders from the DEP. We're trying to be very proactive. So we're hopefully gonna tell them our intent and how we're gonna handle this and then we can keep them as a very concerned observer in the process. So I don't know how much, I can give you a little background if you want. There's...
Keith, I just want to, just for the record, I know, but I, I want to just have you put it in the record. First of all, when was it slated to be repaired? It's only February, I think you had said to me, right?
Yeah, this was, this would have gone in the spring for the, the gravity sewer would have been installed and then this pump station would be demolished.
So it, it failed only a few months before it was slated to be repaired?
Right, right. And I just want to also mention that there was no sewage that left our system. There was no danger to groundwater, water supplies, anything of that nature. Nothing escaped our system. So it, it was alarmed and we took care of it before there was any spillage. So we did inform the Health Director, as is our process, but there was no, no danger to anybody or the public. We caught it in time and we dealt with it.
The second thing I wanted you to reiterate.
So I just want to reassure everybody that it was not...
Yeah, very important.
It was a catastrophic failure, but not a hazard.
Thank you. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Stu. You can't, can't do that. You can't do that. You can't do it. You can't do it. Sorry. Does anybody have any further questions? Keith, are you done with your?
I can, I can go get a little more background if you want. I have a few more slides.
That might be helpful, yeah.
Okay. This next one is actually, shows the neighborhood that's covered by the pump station. This is Blatchley Road. 322 is up here. Not all of Blatchley is on this pump station. There's the crest of the hill is right here. So all these houses in the green gravity drain to the pump station, which is right there. This is the actual construction plan for it. There's the pump station. This was the house that's right next door. If you notice there, it's hard to see, but their lateral connects just upstream of that manhole. So we're very concerned. If anybody was gonna be affected, they would have been. We called the owner of that house and we told them what was going on. We wanted to reassure them that we're taking all precautions. And they informed me that they have installed shut off valves in their drain pipes in their lower level and they saw our trucks and shut them off. So they were protected.
Excellent.
So there was no spillage in their building.
Very good.
From the crest of the hill, everything grab, goes down gravity drain to the low point, which is where the pump station is. And then, again, that's the equipment. These are compressors. These are the pots. And this is the ground level up here. There's a shed that's on top of it. So there's like this, this hatchway. Eventually, when we demo it, we have to remove all the equipment from there and then we're just gonna fill it with flowable fill. We're gonna take this tube, cut it down below ground level and just abandon it in place as an empty shell. This is, again, the pump station, Blatchley Road, Meriden Waterbury Turnpike. And this is the approximate location of the gravity line that we're gonna put in. This property is owned by the Doobies. They've been excellent to us. They've granted us an easement to put the pipe through their property, down their driveway. This is, you know, through open space, there's no wetlands on the route. It's gone through Open Space Committee. The wetlands agent has, Dave LaValle has looked at it. So what the original plans were, were to construct a woodship path along the route that we're going through the woods. We're doing some plantings and even though I'm asking for an accelerated approval for a contractor, the original plans, all the, everything in the original plans is still gonna be done. So we're not taking any shortcuts on construction. We're just getting an early start of it. We got a, a price from Martin Lovero Contractor using the CROG ZZIQC Program. We've used this before for numerous jobs in town. And what this is, is these items are already prebid. So the price that we got is actually bid price and under our purchasing ordinance, it's, it's acceptable to use as we have done before. So we got a price late this afternoon of 547,200. So what I'm asking for is a contingency for approval of up to 600. We will be hitting some ledge and that's kind of the unknown. So we have quantities for ledge built into the project, which are built into that 547,000 figure. But there's always a chance that in between your test pits, there's a, a rise in the ledge and you might have a slightly higher quantity. So we just like to, you know, request the approval of the funds to do it now. They can, they can get out there. If we, if you folks approve it tonight and Board of Finance approves it on Wednesday, we can give them notice to proceed on Thursday. So with their shop drawings, procurement process, mobilization, clearing and grubbing, we anticipate they could get to work early January. And then we would hope with, out, you know, any problems with ledge or anything like that, that by early March, we could be done. So once we're off bypass, then we can go through the normal bidding process for the demo for the plant. And right, those plans are almost, we're probably at 60% or better. And we, we have a meeting actually next week on that with tie and bond. So that process, we don't have to accelerate. We just go through the normal process with that.
Thank you. Stuart, did you, did you get what you were looking for, the exact location?
Yeah, well, I'm not exactly, but I appreciate you next time if someone's speaking. You clarify, and just provide the meeting, and that is the location. There's a place that doesn't have a, because a lot of people are watching on TV. It will be helpful to be excited.
There's a map.
Okay. I wanted to make sure you...
Obviously, people are...
Okay.
Please.
Okay. Thank you, Stu.
Madam Chair, if I could explain the procedure and what we, what we have to follow.
Please, if you could. Thank you.
To get that.
Oh, there you go.
The, this is a very rare procedure in Southington. Would it, some of you might remember when we did this on Meriden Avenue during the collapse of the road and the sewer many years ago. Maybe I'm the only one who remembers that. But this is a procedure under the charter where I'm asking you to have an emergency appropriation. Where the money comes from, the money will come from the undesignated fund balance of the sewer fund. Okay, not to be confused with the undesigned fund balance of the TOS, the town side. So what happens is, is that we're going to be, and we're gonna modify the resolution that when I sent to you, we didn't have the numbers yet, so I put a figure of nine in there. We're gonna be modifying that tonight for a number of six instead of nine. When we get to that point, I'll have to read the resolution into, into the record. But at this point, that money, assuming it, you approve of it and the Board of Finance approves of it, that money will be taken out of the undesigned fund balance of the sewer fund. Then come the winter or spring, we'll go through our normal bonding procedure, which we would have done anyway. And that money gets bonded and that money is to return to the sewer fund, the undesigned fund balance of the sewer fund. So what's happening is exactly what Keith said. This is a project that we were hoping to do in the spring and do it the, the normal step by step way. Obviously, based on the emergency, which I'm asking, I'm recommending that we declare, we're using that money for that. And I can't think of anything more of an emergency than a safety matter that we have to get this done as, as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. Yes.
I have a question.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for, thank you, Keith, for the update. And thank you to the staff for addressing it so, so quickly. The, the presentation mentioned that the construction isn't able to start until January 20th approximately. So what, how are we gonna bridge the gap between today and January 20th? And, and are those costs, because there has to be additional operating costs to take the material in, in the trucks and haul it out?
We're not, we're not hauling it anymore. And I estimate it's January 2020. We're hoping that the second week right after New Year's, they can get going.
So, so I guess my other question, like, how is it operating from now until then?
So what we did is, people went down in the pit.
Yep.
And they cut the force main where it connected to the two ejector pumps. We put a temporary pump in the basement.
Okay.
With float activated on off and also flow... With float activated on-off and also float alarms for high, high level. And then, we connect it into that force main.
Got it.
So, it works like a sump pump in your basement right now. So, it's on automatic.
Right.
So, when it, when it, that pit that was normally dry now fills up, the pump will activate-
Short straw.
And pump it out into the, into the force main like it's always been going. So, it goes the normal route. We don't have a truck on scene. The cost we're incurring right now are the rental of the pump. But, other than that, you know, our guys, other than being very, you know, vigilant and aware that any alarm from that, they have to immediately respond with the pumper truck. It's not really any extra cost.
So, it's a temporary fix that will bridge the gap that we need it to do?
Yeah, it's a temporary fix. We don't have a redundancy. All our other pump stations have two pumps. We have redundancy. This one, we don't. But, we have redundancy on the alarms. We have alarms in the pit and we have alarms on the first manhole upstream.
All right.
I had a question, Keith. Is there another pump available should that one fail? So, you said there's no redundancy, obviously, we're renting it. If it was a failure of this pump, is there another one available?
We have a grease pump that we purchased for a different purpose. So, if that one fails, we would temporarily shuttle with our truck like we did before while we installed that grease pump. But, it's hard on a temporary basis to do the computerized, normally, they're run by a computer for on-off and they alternate. So, it's hard to do that with, on a temporary basis.
It would make sense to be like a little cycle like that. But, I was wondering what the lifetime of a pump like that would be? You know, if this could be for a month and a half, continuous duty, does that pump, is it rated for that? And if for some reason it fails, can we grab another one and put it in there?
Yeah.
Like in your basement of your house?
Yeah, the pump that we're, that's in there now is rated for that use and should have no problem running for, you know, the time we need it to run.
Thank you.
Yes.
Keith, you had mentioned the DEP, the state, you know, staying involved. Is it primarily that you give them notice of all of this?
We're required, yeah, anytime there's anything that's abnormal in operation, like a pump failure. And now, we're, even though we're on, we're pumping through the system, it's technically a bypass. So, we're required to notify them within, I believe, two hours of the event. So, we've, we've done the notification. They're aware of it. And then, like I said, we have a meeting tomorrow at the plant where our normal construction update for the construction of the upgrade. DEP will be there and I'll pull him aside and I'll give him more information on what we're doing and the steps we're taking.
And so, do you anticipate from them that, you know, typically, are they okay with the plans? Or do they have to approve certain steps along the way?
At this point, we believe they're gonna leave it up to us to take care of the emergency and address it. I believe we've covered it adequately. But, we wanna be very proactive in showing them that we're doing all we can-
Right.
To, to address this. And that, that will keep them happy and assured that we're competent and know what we're doing, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Keith or for Mark? Thank you, Keith, so much.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm glad that no one is affected, that we can move quickly on this. And so, thank you very much. So, the resolution we-
It'll be on-
We have on?
New Business C, yes.
Yeah, New Business C, right. Very good. Thank you. Is, is that it, Bill, for sewer?
That is it for sewer?
That's enough.
I know. I know. Thank God, we had some funds in, within the sewer budget, so we can do this.
Who had to draw the short straw to go down into that pit? That I wanna know.
Public Works, Mr. Dos Santos, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Wednesday was our first Public Works meeting, which was very interesting for me, because I've only been to a handful of those. So, a lot of good information. First on the list was Chief Daley was there. And he reported that last Wednesday, there was a gas leak on downtown Plansville. So, they had to shut the road down between downtown Plansville and Buckland Street. But, they repaired that, so that's back up and running. The Southington Police were busy planning for the White Christmas event in both Plansville and Southington, which we all know went off without a hitch. Wonderful time for everyone. And the department, the police department is in discussions with the parking authority over cars being left overnight in municipal parking lots during snowstorms. It's becoming part of a problem. The Public Works Committee agreed that maybe a gentle warning should be given to the cars first to remind them that they're not allowed to park overnight, especially in the event of a snowstorm. But, if there's continual problems, then they will have to start towing, because it's really hampering the plowing of the snow in those municipal lots. So, it's becoming part of a problem. So, so, we're gonna watch that very closely. The transportation calendar was shared for 2020. It'll be available on the Southington website very soon. Your typical calendar, every Saturday from eight to three from April until October. And then, every other Saturday from eight to three from November to March. And they also shared with us the numbers that come in, which is quite interesting, the influx of cars that come in, especially after, you know, wind storms. They get more cars because there's more brush to bring in. So, it's interesting to see those numbers. And all of that information is available as well. The Highway Department spoke. They discussed leaves. They were able to complete the one pass of all four zones. The second pass was started, but had to be postponed due to the snow. So, they're in the hopes that with the warm weather that we had today and tomorrow, some of the snow will melt and they'll reconvene picking up the, the second pass of all four zones. Sorry?
Second pass of Zone One.
Oh, second pass of Zone One. Yeah, no kidding. Sorry. They did discuss that the ton-
Hope you maybe did that.
Sorry. The tonnage of, of total leaves picked up is on track with a typical year. Okay? Snow, Annette did review the plowing procedures and mentioned how staff has called in. It's an arduous, oh, yeah.
Just before you get off the leaves. And I don't know if you know, or maybe the town manager can tell us, just because of the snow that came so early. I know residents are very appreciative of having the transportation open, even the off weekends, to be able to drop off brush and leaves. So, when will that continue?
That actually, that ended on Friday.
Oh, it ended, okay. Have we considered maybe adding maybe one more weekend, again, just because of the fact that there was a early snowstorm, so?
Maybe not. This weekend would be too tight, because obviously, there's still snow on the ground. But, possibly the next weekend. I'll talk to-
I'd appreciate, I'm just thinking, because to your point, Zones Two, Three and Four are not having the town come back out. So, people might not have been able to do that. So, you know, it's, it's minimal for impact on us, but at least for residents, it'll give them an opportunity to bring their leaves or brush to the transportation?
Sure, that's the third, that would be the, not the-
If there's no objection, I think it would be.
It'll be the 20th. Friday, the 20th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. For, back to the snow, Mrs. Stern questioned, did present the procedures. And it's an arduous task to try to figure out when the snow is coming. They rely, like we do, on weather forecasts. And sometimes, they're wrong. Lots of times, they're wrong. So, they are, it's, it's a learning process. Every storm is different. But, I think this past storm, they did a great job. They did, they did work from Sunday morning right up until Tuesday afternoon. And that was non-stop. There was crews coming in all the time. So, it was, it was interesting. The Engineering Department discussed some information as well. They're working on extending the rails and trails from, to the Southington Town Line. There is anticipated completion date of fall 2021 for that. There was some discussion on the Plansville safety improvements. And we also had a discussion on the Marion Avenue Bridge replacement over Homestead and Brook. There was a public meeting on December 18th at 5:00 PM, right here at the municipal center. For all those interested, can come and attend that meeting. It's open to the public. The committee also discussed and took action on bids for the police department generator replacement. And that's on our agenda for later tonight. So, we'll discuss that further then. And the Center Street crosswalks are being worked on. But, now, with the snow and with the inclement weather, we'll have to wait until the spring to complete the project. They did what they could before the Christmas in the community kicked off. So, it's on hold right now until the spring. We did hear from the Water Department. Well, number two is done. Well, number two A is completed. It will be online this week, they're hoping. And the Mill Street Tank is ongoing with a finish date of summer 2020. And I did mention earlier about the Adopt a Fire Hydrant project. And they're asking for our help to get the word out, to have folks make sure that if they see a fire hydrant that's clogged with snow, to go out and clean them up. Okay, any questions?
Anybody?
It's a good meeting. Chris, we're looking forward to seeing you at the next one.
Okay, very good. Town managers report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned at your last meeting, we're gonna be moving full bore into revaluation come the new year. Some people have already received, actually, most of you have already received the card. Please fill it out. Make sure you get it back to the assessor and tax collector's office. But, I thought it would be important for you and for the public who are watching on TV to understand how the revalue process works. And Director Babman is here tonight to inform us how it's going to work. And if they have any questions, who to contact. So, Director Babman, if you would, please.
Hello.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thanks for having me. I'm just gonna get right into it, if that's okay. Assessment basics, we start off the calendar in the assessor's office as of October 1st of any list year. And we like to assess property, or actually, it's state mandated that we assess property at 70% of its market value. There are three types of property that we assess. So, for real estate property, we are looking to assess all the taxable parcels in town. And we'd like to assess the property owners as of October 1st. For personal property, we like to assess all businesses that are in business actively as of October 1st. And for motor vehicles, we assess vehicles that are registered with the State of Connecticut as of October 1st. So, even if it's October 2nd that you register a vehicle or you acquire a property, that information will not get updated until later on in the assessment year. There are many different types of real estate. We assess residential, commercial, industrial, vacant land. And there's also a category called use assessment. And that's for the open space and farmland and forest that needs to be applied for. So, those are the types. We use a Vision KAMA database. And KAMA stands for Computer Assisted Mass Appraisal. And it's a real convenient way to update tables that, to put it in a way that you can understand maybe, is that if you have carpeting inside your house, there is a value assigned to that. If you have hardwood, there's a different value assigned to that. It might be a little higher than that of carpeting. If you have outdoor on the outside, wood siding, usually vinyl siding would be assessed higher than that. So, all of these data points are collected. And the values for them are input into this KAMA database, so that when we go into a certain property and update what types of physical characteristics a property has, the correct values will get assigned to that. And so, everybody with vinyl siding gets the same assessment. Everybody with hardwood gets the same assessment. It's the goal to be equitable in our assessment. So, the KAMA system helps with that. And Vision is the name of the company that provides that database. They are also the name of the company that is going to, that is doing our revaluation at this point. We just upgraded to, from Vision Six, we upgraded to Vision Eight. So, we just did that in April, so it was relatively new for us. And Vision was one of the companies that did respond to our RFP. And we thought they were a good fit. In addition to being the lower bid, we were really pleased that we could use them, so that they can help us get to know the newer system while helping us with this revaluation. So, revaluation is state mandated. There are multiple statutes that deal with the revaluation. We have to do a statistical revaluation at least once every five years. And we have to do a full inspection of the properties in town at least once every 10 years. So, the last revaluation we did was effective with the 10-1-15 grant list. And that was a full inspection. So, this time, we're doing a revaluation that's gonna be effective with the 10-1-20 grant list. And that's just a statistical revaluation. The purpose of a revaluation is not to raise taxes, but to eliminate the assessment inequities. We're trying to update the assessments, so that they get, actually, as of 10-1 of 2020, property valuations will be 70% of their current market value. And we're trying to balance the real property burden amongst our taxpayers in town. The revaluation started back in June of 2019. We sent out data mailers. And I'm gonna zoom in just a little bit if I can. They kinda looked like this. And what they do was, is notify the property owners what our database has in terms of the physical characteristics of their property. So, the building style, the year it was built, if there were any renovations, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms, how many kitchens? And if you have a finished basement or not. And so, we ask that the taxpayers look at these forms, make any corrections if necessary, sign it and get it back to us. And then, we take it from there. There were 16,000 of these forms that were sent out. And per the contract, the revaluation company is going to inspect 10% of those. So, about 1,600 properties will be physically inspected. And they're also going to inspect 500 open building permits. So, they're gonna look for residential. They're gonna look at building permits and market sales for one year leading up to 10-1 of 2020. So, if you pulled a building permit in the past year, if you sold or, actually, if you purchased a home in the past year, those are the properties that are most likely going to get inspected by this company. So, that's how we compile the data for residential. For the commercial properties, there, there's an income and expense report that we ask our businesses to fill out every year. And those reports ask businesses for their rental rates, what they are collecting in rent from their tenants, what their expenses are, their net operating expense rates, their cap rates and other trends in the market. So, the data collectors are going to analyze those income and expense reports from the last year. And they are going to develop some data points to put into the system. The data collectors are going to be visiting homes. They have also, they've actually started doing that. And there is a process that they like to try and follow. So, again, like I said, if you have an open building permit or you've sold your house or purchased a new house, they're gonna knock on your door. And if you answer the door, if you happen to be home, they're gonna introduce themselves. They're gonna be wearing identification badges with pictures on it. There should have some Vision database hats or jackets. Their cars are also going to bear a decal on it that says they're with the assessor's office. And they have all been background checked by the Southington Police Department. And the Southington Police Department also has a listing of the vehicles that they are gonna be driving. So, if the taxpayers have any kind of questions, we've been getting questions too, because people ring the doorbell and they're not exactly sure, the taxpayers, who is at the door and what they're doing. But, I'm 100% confident that when our data collectors are ringing the doorbell, they are going to be identifying themselves right off the bat. There shouldn't be any, you know, wondering who is at the door. If it's from the Vision company, they should be fully identifiable. So, they're gonna ask to gain entrance into your home. The process should take 10 to 15 minutes. It's not gonna be a long process. They're gonna wanna go into the home and they're gonna want to count bedrooms, count bathrooms, check out to see if there's been any recent renovations. They're gonna also, once the interior inspection is done, they're gonna wanna go around the outside perimeter of the home and take measurements. One of the statistics we look for is square footage. So, that is gonna be determined by actually measuring the outside perimeter. And when they're out there, they're gonna be noticing if there's any outbuildings, if there's any sheds, any pools, pool houses. They might measure patios and decks. And then, they'll be on their way. If no one answers the door that first time, they are going to make a second attempt. And they are going to make that second attempt at a different time of day. So, if someone's working, they're hoping, I mean, they'll go back in the evening and hope that maybe someone's there. They will also be working on Saturdays and Sundays later on in the process, because they really do wanna get in to get an accurate picture of what the home looks like. If the second attempt is unsuccessful, they are going to then send a letter to the taxpayer. And they are gonna request that that taxpayer call them and schedule an appointment for a time, a date that is convenient- a time, a date that is convenient for them. And they will go ahead and schedule those appointments. Those appointments are made directly with the company. They're not gonna be made through the assessor's office. And they will go back at whatever time is agreed upon, and they will get the information they need. If they're denied entrance, which is totally acceptable, you're not forced to let these people in your house if you'd rather not. Some people have dogs that bark incessantly, some people have babies that are crawling around the house. So if they opt not to let somebody in, the data collector may stay on the front step and ask if they can just ask questions. How many bathrooms do you have? How many bedrooms do you have? If they don't wanna share the information, the data collector is going to estimate. And they are going to put down what they think according to how the house appears, according to any permits that may have been taken out. They will estimate to the best of their ability. So if we wanna get the most accurate information, obviously the best way to do that is to let them in. Once they gather all that data, there's a whole bunch of math that's involved, and I haven't gotten involved in that yet. But they work for months with these statistical methods, calculating the mean and the median and coefficient of dispersion and all kinds of fancy names that, but that work goes on for quite some time. They are going to then get their proposed valuations to my office by the third week of October of next year, 2020. So all this time, we're gonna be having those inspections going on. So the third week of October, we'll be getting those values, and then my office will be reviewing them. And reassessment notices are going to be mailed by mid-November of 2020. And at that point, if the taxpayers have any kind of questions or disagreements, they don't agree with the valuation that the data collectors and the revaluation company came up with, we will be holding informal hearings. So that is gonna be the time for them to make an appointment to come in for an informal hearing. The Vision company will be available, and they will be hearing these issues. And they are going to try to work out the disagreements at that time. So when they can. And that, the informal hearing process, we hope to be wrapped up before Christmas, because nobody wants to, you know, carry that past the holiday. So our goal is to be done with the informal hearings by Christmas time, and then we will send new notices to let the taxpayer know what the result of that hearing was. The final values are gonna be certified on the 2020 grand list no later than January 31st of 2021. That's a state statute. We like to get our grand list signed by January 31st. We are entitled to request an extension, but we don't like to do that. So that's our goal date, January 31st. And then within 10 days of that grand list signing, we are going to send increased-decreased notices so that everybody on the grand list is gonna know what their new assessment is. February 20th is the deadline to apply for the Board of Assessment Appeals. So if you went to an informal hearing and you didn't like the outcome, you still will have another outlet to air that grievance. That's the Board of Assessment Appeals. And the deadline to apply is February 20th. It's a state mandated deadline. If you come in on the 21st, we will not be able to help you. And then the Board of Assessment Appeals meets in March of 2021. And the new tax amounts that are based on the adjusted assessments from this revaluation are going to be coming due July 1st of 2021. It seems like a real long ways away, but it'll be here before we know it. And if you've gotten your bill, the time to appeal your assessment will have already passed. So you need to pay attention when you get your revow notices, when you get your notice of assessment change after we sign the grand list. You are offered many opportunities to get in touch with the assessor's office to dispute that assessment, and we encourage you to do that before your time has expired. So that's the revow part of it, and I just wanted to flow into the 2018 supplemental billing. The supplemental billing is for vehicles that are registered. As I mentioned, we have a grand list date of October 1st. If you register a vehicle or transfer plates from one vehicle to another anytime October 2nd or after through October 1st, you are not going to get a bill on the July billing cycle. You will be getting a supplemental bill. And that file came from DMV just a few weeks ago. There were 7,500 vehicles on that list, and it came in at about $1.9 million of assessment. So the pricing is all complete. I did just send the bill file to the printer last week, and those bills will be mailed December 31st of this year. The due date is January 1st. So that's why we don't send them out any earlier. The due date is January 1st. You have a 30-day grace period, so February 1st is the last day to pay. In this case, February 1st is on the weekend, so February 3rd is the last day to pay that supplemental bill. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions? Yes, Chris?
Not a question, just a comment. Just wanna thank you, this is very thorough. Is this gonna be available on the town website? Because I think the public, if they weren't able to attend or watch tonight's meeting, would find this information really helpful.
Absolutely. Kathy, you'll put it back.
Yeah, we're gonna put that on the website. We also have a link on the assessor's homepage that is going to have any kind of updates and notices regarding revaluation, so that if a taxpayer has a question, they can click there and hopefully get the answer they're looking for. And if not, they can call us anytime, we'd be happy to help out. But again, the police department, town manager's office, and of course, the assessor's office has all the information about the data collectors that will be out in the field, so they can call us with any questions.
Your report was very thorough, and I think many people are apprehensive when they hear that somebody's knocking at their door. So I think that that was very, very good. You kind of allayed an awful lot of fears. Thank you. We are gonna put it up.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yep?
Thank you, Teresa, thank you.
Yeah, hi.
So I just have a question. So the, if a taxpayer does not do the informal hearing, then they get their value, excuse me, can they still appeal?
Yes.
Appeal to the, but it's a, it's a quick turnaround time, right?
It is a quick turnaround time, yes.
So if they receive it no later than February, they'd have to, they're gonna be mailed no later than February 10th.
Right.
But then they have to...
They have 10 days to get their appeal in if they wanna do that, yeah.
So that's something I think that, you know, people should be aware of. The taxpayer should be aware of.
We definitely want to try and get the assessments as accurate as possible before we sign the grand list, because that signed grand list is what we determine our budget on. That's how, you know, the Board of Finance, Town Council, they all work to use that number to determine, you know, what the mill rate's gonna end up being. So if people know that they're gonna disagree with their assessment, we would recommend they try to get it straightened out at the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Right, at the in...
In March.
The informal.
I'm sorry, yes.
The informal.
Right, that's perfect.
That's right.
Yeah. At the informal hearings, and like I said, though, they do have the opportunity to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals if they happen to miss that informal opportunity.
Very good.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Madam Chair, no further questions on that. The next one is what Mr. Del Santo talked about under his report. It's the police department generator bids. Just so you know, and most of you already know this, my plan over the last several years was to remove all underground tanks under my jurisdiction. This is the last underground tank at the police department. So what we're doing is we're removing the tank, we're getting the generator and putting a belly tank in. The generator that we have at the police station will be moving to this building, so we'll be lighting up, be able to light up this building. The reason why, obviously, I held back on that is because I wanted to make sure that the voters allowed us to buy this building. So now that they did, we'll be moving the generator over to here. We had five bidders I'm recommending, and so is the Public Works Committee, R&amp;C Electric LLC out of Bristol, Connecticut, in the amount of $160,653, which is the bid plus a $20,000 contingency. Any questions on that?
Mark, can I just ask you?
Sure.
So the $20,000 contingency, you feel that's a good amount?
Yeah, we have, I budgeted, I believe it's $190,000 in this, in this particular capital line, but we wanted to put, you know, the contingency in there. If it's not used, it stays in the capital line, but we figure that's gonna be enough. With all tanks, you always get a little bit of question when you pull it out, but this tank isn't that old. I believe it's only, the building's only 17 years old, so I don't foresee any cleanup issues.
Contamination, okay.
Yeah, if there was contamination, an old, old tank, I probably would put more in there, but it's only 17 years old, I should be able to handle that.
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I know I sent this to the council already. The two attorneys on the tripartite agreement, obviously, the town is the third party. The two attorneys have not quite wrapped it up yet, and as you know, this has been a three-year project, so they've asked us to table it tonight. I have no problem with that, we'll handle it in January.
Okay, very good.
The other one is, yes, it is that time of year again. I have the budget scheduled for you, and just so the public knows, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'll just read the important dates on this.
Please, yeah.
Okay. My letters already went out to the department heads. Their budgets are coming to me no later than January 3rd, 2020. I am gonna allow a little leeway for police and fire who have to respond through their boards and library. They have to respond through their boards, so therefore, they're gonna be a little bit later. So I will then have my budget to the Board of Finance by February 18th, 2020. The Board of Finance will then do whatever actions they, they would do on this. They're gonna have a public hearing. Their public hearing will be scheduled for March 2nd at the Apollo Middle School at 7:00. Then of course, Madam Chair, as you know, they're gonna be voting on it and then sending to you. We have you scheduled for your public hearing on April 27th, 2020, and then your action will be on May 11th, 2020, and then the Board of Finance fixes the mill rate on May 18th. This will also be on the website for everyone to know, but it's something that you should, you know, obviously put in your, your computer or have close by, because these are important dates, and you're invited to all of these dates, except for my meetings with my department heads. Other than that, you're invited to all the dates. Any questions on that?
Thank you so much, Mark. It's important for us to attend those, too.
The last thing under my report is that we're gonna, I'm asking you to listen to an update from the chair and the director of the library. They're gonna give us an update on the project that's very important, obviously, to this board and to the town. So if you would, either the chair or Christie, or both? We'll take the chair.
Hi, I'm Kevin Curtis, Chair of the Library Board. I wanna thank you for giving us a few minutes to talk about this project tonight. We're all very excited about it. I wanna thank members of the Library Board who came out in support tonight as well, who are in the audience. My main goal here tonight is I wanna introduce to you Jeffrey Hoover, who is our architect designing the concept plans for the library. He came down from Boston tonight to tell you a little bit about the schedule of this project and some of the things he's been working on so far. And we're really excited to be working with him so far. It's been a great experience. I've learned a lot about libraries talking to him. But before I bring up Mr. Hoover, I would just like to, for the council and for the members of the public, talk a little bit again about why we need this project, because it's so important for everybody to understand why we are working on this. And it's really a question of need. And there's three areas of need for the library: access, safety, and efficiency. The library is unique in the community, that it's the one building where everybody uses it equally. It's open to everybody, from very youngest to the very oldest people in our community. And currently, it does not allow for equal access for everybody in the community. There are many deficiencies in terms of meeting ADA compliance. The elevator is hard to access, it is outdated, and people can't fit on it. There are questions of safety in the building. Fire code is a continuous problem, being able to meet the evolving fire codes and adapt to them. And there's a huge problem with efficiency. This year already, we've spent over $20,000 on repairs to the heating and cooling system. And this type of issue is not new. We've been for years throwing good money at a deteriorating building. The roof was a big project a few years ago. And so it's a 45-year-old building, and it needs, we need a new building essentially. It's not just the Library Board that believes in this project, there are all sorts of other groups involved here. The 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development lists the library as currently inadequate to meet the future needs of our community. The State Library Board actually recommends a building that is more than double the size of what we currently have. And we've also heard in the last couple of months from many members of the community, and that's something that Mr. Hoover is gonna speak about tonight. What is interesting about hearing from members of the community, though, and we heard from a lot of them, I can come up here and tell you about all the problems with the library, and all the reasons it's a terrible building, it's out of date. But what the community tells us is all the things they would like to see in a library, the potential for what a library could be for this town. We could do so much better. The people want better services in this town, and I believe we need to provide that for them. And that's what's really excited about here. Great towns have great libraries, and I think it's time that, that we have one. Before I bring up Mr. Hoover, I wanna invite all of you to, on January 23rd, a community meeting at the library. There will be some very early stages of concept plans drawn up by then. At 6:00, we're inviting members of the town council and any other elected officials in town to come and look at the plans. You'll be able to comment on them, give feedback. And then at 6:30, members of the community are invited to come to the library in the downstairs meeting room to get a look at the plans. And again, we are, we are looking for feedback from the community. What do you want in the library? What do you like about the early plans? What would you like to see differently? So please put that on your calendars. And I'll now bring up Jeffrey Hoover from Teppe Architects.
Thank you, Kevin. Welcome, Jeffrey.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the council, it's a pleasure for me to be here. I would like to show you some things. So I have a thumb drive, and I haven't interfaced with this technology before, but I presume if I put my thumb drive in here, we'll be able to drag a present.
Not sure.
Give it a try, give it a try. Well, see what happens.
Keith, have we got it?
I think it's gonna work.
I think so. I think you got it, Jeff.
How about that? I'm always terrified the technology will let me down, and this time, it didn't. Well, I'm Jeff Hoover from Teppe Architects. We specialize in the planning and design of public libraries and have been doing that kind of work since about 1979. Of course, I haven't been doing it since 1979. But since 1984, I have at Teppe Architects. It's been more than three decades of thinking about libraries, so I am very pleased to be able to come here and talk to you all about the interesting library, you know, challenges and opportunities that you have. So first of all, just like, look at a little bit at, well, there's a library and, and the library site. We are, you know, sort of in a good position relative to the, the land area available for the library, you know, at a, at a really fantastic location within the community. This doesn't always happen, that there's this kind of foresight to sort of reserve this kind of real estate resource for the library facility, and we have that here, so that's very positive. A little chart, which is a little bit hard to read at the scale perhaps, of our timeline for this process. It's roughly a three-month-long project for us at this point to look into opportunities for expansion of the library on this site. And the blue line cutting down roughly through the middle of here is our time-now line, so we're just past having completed sort of the dark, big horizontal line, which is preliminary programming, and also aspects of community outreach. It's been an important part of our process so far to not only sort of bring the expertise that we have from doing a bunch of libraries, probably 100 over the last, you know, 30 years, but also to hear from this community what's going to be the right solution for library services going forward, because we don't, we don't know that part coming into it. And having an opportunity within our process to really hear from everybody is super important to getting the library right. It's an important service within a community, and they're all different. They need to be sort of custom-made for each, each, each group of, of library users. There is no one-size-fits-all solution in this day and age, in this 21st century era of library service. But the, the sort of lavender line, more or less matching my sweater this evening, is our design-phase services. So we are just beginning to make some preliminary design explorations based on what we've learned. And I just wanna bring you up to date on... and I just want to bring you up to date on what we've been doing. Part of our scope of work is to look at the existing building and make some assessments of its condition. You've already heard some things about it. One of the other things we're looking at is mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection systems within the building, HVAC, heating, ventilating, air conditioning, lighting, everything. And so we've had a team of engineers go through the building and evaluate the conditions of everything. I can report that their conclusions are that most of the systems in the building, but not all, are at the end of their useful life, and some are beyond that, some are in a state of failure in repair. But in the context of expanding library services to sort of be on par with the community size, almost all that infrastructure within the existing building, it would be prudent to replace, even if it wasn't actually broken right now. If you're building a facility to stand the test of time for the next generation or the next 50 years, as this one has been around for about 50 years, we need to start with all-new systems, and that's pretty much where we are. Then there's the envelope of the building, the exterior walls and roof. There's been some recent roof work done. We would like to, you know, revisit that, but we also need to look at the walls and the windows. What is the R-rating of those walls? I don't exactly know, but the drawings show approximately three inches of fiberglass bad insulation, you know, in the cavity, which is in a completely substandard relative to meeting contemporary energy codes for, you know, the thermal performance of the building envelope. The windows are, you know, sort of past the point of serviceability in terms of opening and closing windows, and their insulated capacities are also, you know, very low in accordance with contemporary standards. There's a lot of work that really needs to be done just to bring, you know, the building up to par. These are, our reports are still preliminary at this point in time, but when they are complete, obviously, you know, copies can be made available. So that's, you know, sort of the report on the building. We're also looking at the library site, which you can see the property boundaries sort of lightly outlined in red, and the area sort of shaded a little bit lighter here. One of the things we think about when evaluating a site, of course, is which way is up or more or less, which way is north, because, you know, the orientation on the planet is important relative to, you know, sun angles and daylight and views that we might be able to garner from a building, and also in terms of the orientation for the building for optimal energy performance. Where do we want to have windows? Where do we not? Where do we want to provide shading, et cetera? So these are some of the things we're, you know, assessing together with the building, also assessing the site. And part of the site is its location on a state highway, so we have some street noise or highway noise on one side, the street noise on the other. Things to think about in terms of not only the noise factor, but also the accessibility, you know, getting people to the library safely and comfortably. And then also visibility, and for a 21st-century library, location is important, and knowing where it is within the community is important, and having it have the kind of appropriate presence is important, so people not only can find the building, but can find pride in seeing the building and going to the building and enjoying the use of the building, but it, and it has the potential to offer that. Again, I think we are, you know, blessed with a really fantastic site. Site access is currently off the state highway in one place, recently reconfigured after the demolition of the houses and the placement of the parking lot, and then there's another one just to the back of the library, which is, you know, close to the de facto front door to the library, even though it is the back door. So that's how we get onto the site. Relative to visibility, the important piece of visibility, I think, is from town center, you know, looking up from where all the activity happens, including, you know, the Apple Harvest Festival, which I was pleased to participate in and get some apple fritter. But the visibility is important, but also the view is important, and there's that, the site has that opportunity as well, providing for views as well, views out as well as views in, again, some of the factors we think about. Also, it has opportunity for views to nature in the context of a library experience a day in the library, being able to look up from your close work and take in a little bit of a distant view to nature is a restorative, you know, 40 seconds that can change your brain chemistry and make you more capable of learning for the rest, you know, of your stay. So do that wherever you are, take a 40-second break every once in a while, and look outside, because you will be more productive as a result of having done that, especially if you can have a view to nature like will be provided, you know, from this library site. So a lot of good things going for it, and we just sort of begin to look at the zoning and the parcels and see what kind of opportunities and restrictions that has, and of course, there will be setbacks because there are commercial business districts, so it has a 10-foot setback from the front yard, not so significant, and, but there's a 20-foot setback at the back, and side yards to residential properties. Of course, that happens to be where the Great Hill is anyway. So in terms of defining where our buildable envelope is on the site, what our buildable area, it doesn't, it's not much of a constraint. There is also, just popped up there on the lower right, you'll see an underground drainage structure there to take the surface runoff and put it into the groundwater. That's probably something we don't want to build on top of, so in terms of establishing our buildable area on site, we need to think about that. And it leaves us with the parcel that we see sort of outlined in the blue line here. That's the places where we could conceivably manage library expansion. It was mentioned earlier that about the state perspective on library services for a community of this size is one of roughly double the size of what there is now, so we're looking at this site, thinking about how could we accommodate a building footprint like that. So the existing library here could be expanded, and the existing library renovated, brought up to snuff, such as that, or could go out the other direction, too, I suppose, just a preliminary exploration. On the other hand, if a new building were to be placed on the site, the basic idea would be to put it where the existing building isn't, so that the library can stay in service during construction. So putting the building over here and then removing the existing library and turning that probably into parking or landscaping in that, on that corner perhaps, these are the kind of, well, these are the two options that we're charged to investigate. Either we're going to expand by renovating, or we're going to expand library services through a new building, and our charge is to look at these two things and then compare them, and we're at the very, very beginning stages of that. So those are, you know, sort of our options. We have talked with the staff, obviously, people who really have the perspective of what community need is based on the conversations they have on a daily basis with library users. So we've surveyed them, talked with them, talked with library department leaders to begin to get a sense of what it is that the library is doing right and what it is that the library should be doing more of, so we can get ourselves oriented to the future and document these understandings as something that becomes a library-building program that we can design against. Part of that process in terms of reaching out to not only the staff, but the members of the community at large, of course, we issued or hosted a online survey and a paper survey, the copies are available to pick up for members of the community everywhere, and offer their comments. Two questions that we ask specifically to help us understand, what is the spatial response? We're architects, we need to design the building, the spaces of the building in response to a service agenda, but we ask the questions that'll help us understand what the right spaces are going to be for the future, and this survey helps us do that. We had a lot of response. I do this a fair amount, and for a community of this size, we don't get 1,311 responses very often. It is, it was great turnout in the course of two weeks to have that many responses. I think there were like 5,000 narrative statements provided, which I had to read several times each, and categorize them so, and so that I can have a way of representing narrative information in a graphical and analytical way. So there is a report, a draft report we've given to the library already, that helps us document what we've come to understand from having digested this information in terms of what is important to the community going forward. Basically, we ask, you know, three kind of basic questions, saying, what works, what doesn't, and what's missing. I mean, we phrase it in different ways than that, but those are the things we really want to know, because we want to know what's good about the library now, so we continue to maintain that in any sort of expanded and improved facility. And what doesn't work, it's, you know, often good to hear people complain, because then we can address the complaints going forward. And the what doesn't part is what are we seeing? What are you all seeing in libraries and places in other communities that you wish you had some of here? And one of the questions we did ask about is, you know, what other libraries are you going to and why? And so those are really informative pieces of information for us in the context of these 1,311 responses. But one of the, one of the early questions we ask is, have you been to the library in the last year? And a lot of, well, you would think that everybody responding would have been to the library, but no. Actually, there's a, you know, what is that, maybe 10% of the folks haven't. And this is also important. It doesn't happen this way for us all that often. We've had people who don't go to the library who are responding to our surveys. So this is good information. You want to look specifically at what the people who aren't coming are saying about the library and the services maybe that they wish they had, the things they wish they could have in the library in the future, so we could, you know, more adequately serve the entirety of the community with a future facility. So that's important. And that's sort of like a big picture, you know, general response. We can also look at all the information that we got, such as this, on sort of a community by community basis, to see, you know, what neighborhood are we getting certain kinds of comments from, and it's interesting to see that the graph stays pretty much the same everywhere, but in some areas, it's a little bit different. And we can apply the same kind of analysis and have two other ways of looking at the data, like if you're younger, what do you think, and if you're older, what do you think about the questions that we asked, and sort of judge the facility response based on all, you know, broad spectrum of these kinds of pieces of information. Other things we ask is what, you know, what is your age range, because we can parse the data later by age, but also because we want to make sure that we're hearing from the full age demographic, and the graph looks pretty good. I mean, the 20- to 29-year-old piece of pie is too small. If I was at Thanksgiving getting that slice of pie, I'd be pretty disappointed. So we could have heard more from that particular age group, but generally speaking, I think we, based on my experience, it was a pretty good cross-section of the community in general. But it also tells us something about community makeup of library users. If I go back to that, you see that, you know, the 30-to-45s or, and 46-to-65-year age group represents, you know, almost three-quarters of the library users, certainly more than two-thirds. How many kid, how many households have kids aged five and under, so how many families are there out there with preschoolers that have an opinion about the library? And it looks like about three-quarters are, of the residents here don't have kids, but a quarter of them do in this age range, you know, in the preschool age. That helps us think about, you know, what, how much library service to provide to that group. And then school-age kids, another, you know, another piece of interesting information for us. It looks like a little bit, more than half of the community has school-age kids who could potentially make great use of the library services. And people over 65, about a quarter or a little bit more than a quarter of the respondents were over that age. So we have, we have a lot of good information to work with in terms of that initial sort of questions we had for the community, and then we also had other opportunities to hear from, from folks, and one of them was to sort of accost parents of young children coming out of story hour and give them an opportunity to tell us, you know, as they go in, think about it, and as they come out, you know, put something on a post-it and stick it on the wall here in response to, you know, a couple of basic questions. What do you like best about Southington's library? Spaces for children? How can our spaces meet your needs better? And what would you love to see in a future Southington library? We got, you know, a variety of comments, you know, from that angle as well. And that was, we did that on a day when we had a community meeting, kind of a workshop, give people an idea of what we were thinking, but also ask them how are they using the library now? So these are the plans of the existing library, and what we ask people to do is to look at the plans and also look at the program. We had a preliminary draft of the program. All the public spaces were represented with some narrative about what the goals are for the future spaces, and have people write in, you know, things that we might have left off, cross off stuff that they didn't like, and highlight things that they really did like. So, you know, here's, you know, some of the work product from those sessions. People are marking out on the plans how they use the existing building, so that, again, we understand the different ways that the different parts of the community use the facility, and then a lot of narrative comments written in on the, on the draft of the program. That information then gets sort of assembled and condensed onto one sheet and introduced, or built into our preliminary report on the program. So the people who have participated through the survey and through the community meeting have actually, you know, actively helped us draft the narrative that describes the future library, and this is becoming, you know, our program documents. We have, you know, a draft of the program, which the library has been vetting to make sure it meets their expectations for functionalities and efficiencies and quantities and qualities of space, as well as, you know, you know, numbers of computers and numbers of books, et cetera.
So I'm going to just jump in right here, Jeff, before we go any further. So next steps for you is, are what?
Well, working with the program that we, that has just evolved, just been completed, and a final draft is with the library. We begin thinking about how to arrange the parts and pieces, but I will just, you know, sort of, there's only a couple more things here, and I'll just skip ahead toward the end. I mean, there's this multi-page program document, which we won't go through.
We thank you for that.
But there is also the state formula, more or less. I mean, it's the spreadsheet that the state has for determining what the appropriate sort of quantities and qualities of the library might be, or mostly just quantities, and the library has cranked through the spreadsheet and come up with the bottom line from that. I don't know if the state did this for you, if the, or if you did this for the state, I can't remember, but.
You have to do this part of the grant. Keep private the grant.
Okay, so this was a part of the grant application materials. Then it suggests a certain size. It says 44,460 square feet of library is what the state would like to see here to feel it was a project deserving of state support, financial support. And our program, its bottom line is less than that right now. It's about 37,000, 38,000 in round numbers, so it's slightly less than what the state has mandated, and we could probably explain, you know, why we feel like we can realize, why we can specifically meet community needs with a slightly different number than what the state recommends. I mean, they have a five-page spreadsheet, we have a much more intensive process for determining what the right response to the need is. So that is sort of a race to the end, sort of anticipating, you know, what you're, what you're, what you're needing, which is a short presentation about what we're doing. I wanted at least, you know, what we have done, and working with that document that begins to describe the future of library services, we will begin sort of arranging the parts and pieces in a way that makes sense to fit it onto the site in one of two ways, either as a renovation and addition or as all-new construction. And on the 23rd of January, we should have some preliminary ideas worth sharing that shows how these two things might work out, and would welcome all your feedback about it.
Yeah, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming up all the way from Boston. I do want to open it up, if anybody has any questions, I, please raise your hands so I can, yes, Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate the update. Do, on the.
Sorry?
No, I'm good, thanks. On the committee itself, do we have representation from our Planning and Zoning Commission or staff?
We do. Keith is still on there? Or is Keith, Keith, are you still on that committee?
No.
Just the selection part, so.
I only ask because, you know, you brought up some really good points about the siting of the building, visibility, nature, the downtown, and I, my personal view is that the corner location is a very attractive location for a number of reasons, many that you've pointed out. I wonder if a professional planner would have some input on that parcel, maybe doing some research with you on, you know, is there a preferred location, given the various scenarios that we have available to us? And, you know, if it turns out that the corner is in fact a potential, or given the constraints of the property, if it is one of the preferred siting locations versus, say, the side lot, would, I didn't hear you say anything about either completely eliminating the existing building and building back up again on the existing site. I heard you say.
Right.
Right.
I heard you say, use the existing building and renovate and expand, but I didn't hear you say eliminate it or shut it down and, and, and build out. And I know that, you know, doing some research, I've seen communities that have temporary libraries set up either with other buildings within the municipality or other, you know, areas that might be not leveraged in the community, that they could borrow or lease for a period of time. I'm curious to know if that's part of your plan to consider as well versus just.
I think it could be integrated into our thinking that wasn't our charge because the thinking, I believe, was that, you know, in the interest of maintaining library service, also the interest of minimizing external costs to the project, like for a temporary facility and moving back and forth, those are the considerations. However, those are, if a temporary facility were determined to be necessary, we could just roll that into the sort of the calculation at the end.
Yeah, I know, being involved in building renovations in my own organization, I know that oftentimes staging and, you know, if you're going to renovate an existing building, oftentimes it's much more costly to do that because you have to do things twice, if you will, right? You're moving things, you're working on a certain area, you're continuing to operate over here where you could save a lot of money by renovating an entire space all at once. Certainly, the consideration is, you know, keeping things operating in a different location and moving costs and things. But from a facility standpoint and a overall cost standpoint and a project timeline standpoint, I've seen personally that these things can be done cheaper, faster sometimes if you do everything at once versus staging them for usefulness and, and then building and making an addition. So I personally would be interested in seeing a plan that incorporate, if you do, if you're going to do a plan for the corner site, an additional look at shutting that entire site down, moving it to another location temporarily, like, because like I said, in my research, I've seen a number of different communities do that successfully and then allowing the site to be, to be renovated in that fashion. So just food for thought. And I only ask that the, from the planning and zoning perspective because if in fact that corner spot is the, one of the most desirable locations from that site, it might be worth considering that.
Right, aren't you glad it's not a gas station anymore? Right? Before the library was put there, it was a gas station. But I think you, you raised some interesting points that I can briefly address. One is that in the context of adding on and renovating and maintaining library service, there's, there's a little bit of complexity to that because you have to build the addition while living in the library. And interestingly enough, construction activities and library activities aren't perfectly compatible in terms of like the acoustic environment. But also, as you pointed out, there is the, you are running all the trades through the project twice. And you're roughly doubling the timeframe for construction and oftentimes in construction, time is money. So it doesn't always work out to be that it's cheaper to, to add on and renovate than it is to build new. I won't be surprised if when we do the cost estimate, they come out kind of at about the same point, same place in terms of, of cost. And then we would need to, for your third option, which is maybe putting a new facility where the existing one is, roll into sort of a total project budget and allowance for running a temporary facility. We wouldn't necessarily, we have to make it accessible. We have to get, you know, bathrooms into it that meet the, the access codes and it's, and sort of make it be suitable for library service at a temporary facility. So there, there are those costs. But again, you know, it'll be part of the, the weighing of all the factors that we get to by March, I think, when we have everything done. End of February, early March, we'll have some things for everybody to consider and if, you know, looking at this third option may well be worth it.
Madam Chair, if I may direct a question, maybe to the town manager, it might be worth if, if there's, I don't know who the appropriate person would be, somebody in the committee looks at this or somebody with town staff, but if there are potential available locations, either that the town is under utilizing or the town itself as an entity, or if there are private places that might be, you know, might have open access to a lease that's a reasonable price, it might be worth just feeding the.
Yeah, I could check with the, I could check with the economic development coordinator, but that, that, that's a tall order. Moving, moving a library off-site is a tall order, but obviously that's going to be part of your thought pattern. If I may, Madam Chair, I got to make it to, it's important that we all understand what the bottom line is too, is that we, what kind of budget are we operating off of? My, I have a placeholder in my capital for twelve-five. So are we still operating off that twelve-five placeholder? And this, this board never voted on that because that's next year's budget. But I put in my capital plan twelve-five because we had talked about that during the, the capital plan. Are we still operating off that kind of budget or what are we, what are we looking at? And so these guys can understand what you're thinking because, perfectly blunt, the last time we did this, it was turned in kind of like a runaway train and we ended up with a huge number. Some of you remember that and that's what kind of derailed us. I don't want to do that again. So my placeholder is a twelve-five and it's open to the public was, that's my capital plan. So are we still operating in that, in that realm?
Madam Chair, can I just add to that? I was similar. I, I just wanted to add on to what the town manager asked. And on the meeting in Jan, January twenty-third, what can this council expect? And also, I think you just mentioned February and March, more defined plans and options and to, to the town manager's point, more of a firm cost number? So is that?
The reason why he gave you those, the reason why he gave you, I, I gave them those dates. I need to have, as you know how to go to referendum, I need to have those numbers by March so that I can move on to the, this board, the BOF, the Planning and Zoning Commission, back to this board again and work with the bond council by June. So that's, I'm the one who gave them that deadline for that.
I want to go back to your question, because I, I think it's a valid question. Are we still operating with, with what the town manager, have we talked about that?
Madam Chair, can I just ask, just a quick question? Does that twelve-point-five include the, the one million that would be from the state?
Well, the way I put it in there was the twelve-five would be the approval from the, from the taxpayers. So that would, if we do get money from the state, it would offset that. So the twelve-five would be the total number.
Is the total number? Okay.
So in my mind, it was eleven-five plus a million dollars.
Okay.
Well, we haven't priced it yet.
Okay.
I can speak a little bit.
Kevin.
Right, so what Jeff is essentially putting here is taking all the input from the town, from the library staff, from the board and getting some raw numbers as to square footage. So the price we've been going with, this is an estimate, and I, this isn't, is, I think, four hundred dollars a square foot. The, so the, the thirty-seven thousand also is our, our, square feet is our first pass at this. So we are going to continue to, to work on those numbers and I want to, I look really forward to working with all of you to find a number we can all agree with.
We appreciate that too.
That, that four hundred dollars a square foot is based on other projects we've seen around the state. So it, I believe will be higher than that twelve and a half. We talked about it tonight at our board meeting. So we'll have an updated estimate for you.
Very good.
Friday, right? You'll get it earlier, so.
Very good. Any, any, any other questions?
I just wanted to further Paul's, Paul's thinking and that is that this is a one-time, fifty-year event. And we want to make sure that in the preliminary stage, we look at all options.
Sure.
I think that's where he was coming from.
That's right. Very good, Jim. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here and your presentation was very informative. Thank you so much. We look forward to the meeting on the twenty.
Third.
Third. So we'll see you then.
I look forward to seeing you then.
Thank you so much. Safe trip home. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is, that is my report. Other than saying, welcome aboard to Jeremy Taylor. Obviously, I worked with Jeremy as my assistant a few years ago and congratulations and welcome on board.
Congratulations, Jeremy. Thank you. We echo that. Now we're going to go into public communication. I'm going to ask Stu Estra to come up first because he has something going on and I told him I would recognize him first for public communication. Five minutes, right? Yeah, you got it? Yep, okay. Very good.
Madam Chairman, you are correct. This is a long meeting. I would have made it a lot longer, so.
I know.
Let me speak on my, on item C, I'm new business.
Thank you.
However, that said, I'm going to very, I, main reason I came here tonight was for three, is my, by the way, my name is Stuart Estra, fifty-five Long Spring Road, Plansville, Connecticut. Before you guys leave, why don't you stay for two more minutes? Because this could be interesting. I stayed for your presentation. At least you can do a stay for mine.
Stu, the clock is ticking. Let's go.
All right. Anyway, some of you may know, we sold our house last month and we're moving to Greenville, South Carolina as the first of the year. So this will be the last time that I will present here and I haven't done so for many years and I will probably get into that very shortly. But one of the reasons I did some research on the household hazardous waste is because for ten to twenty years, I've been collecting household hazardous waste in my basement and there was a household hazardous waste collection in, back a couple of weeks ago. And I did talk to the town manager and was totally flabbergasted how poorly town of Southington, as affluent we are, we are, we, we don't even make one percent participation. The target is four percent and I talked to Clean Harbors, it's two to three percent, but in a fluent town like Southington at one percent, it's pathetic. We should be having a ten percent participation rate. I've done a lot of research and I'm not going to get into it now because obviously five minutes is going to go and I have other important things I wanted to discuss on my way out to families. But I would suggest you hire, you get one of these people that glossed their committee positions and have a new position for household hazardous waste and I'd be more than happy to give them my knowledge before the end of this year. Because I, I've, I've talked to someone at the state DEP, I've talked to someone at Clean Harbors, I've talked to some woman, by the way, I'll give you this name. Her name is Lynn Robinson. She's in Northeast Recycling Council. She lives in a small community up in Massachusetts of sixteen hu, sixteen hundred residents. And the idea that I had suggested to you, they have implemented that plan. There is no concern about a, a superfund site and it will make it more convenient for your residents to participate in this household hazardous waste. I will give you two examples because we went to the transfer station to finish throwing away some of our crap in the, into the bins. And I talked to two people, we made two, two runs on Saturday. One, the first run we went to, I, I ran to an ex, a town employee in, that I know and he told me not to use his name, but I asked him, have you used the household hazardous waste collection? And he said, yes. He said, I had a three-hour wait, I had to go thirteen miles and I'll never do it again. The second visit, I met another gentleman. He lives in town for fifty years. I asked, did you ever use the household hazardous waste event? He said, never. That was before he threw what looked like some, potentially was a household hazardous waste into the burnable bin in the town transfer station. I don't know if it was because it could be empty and if it's empty, it's not a household hazardous waste, but I'm pretty sure that it was. Now, if anybody has any questions or you hire somebody to be running this household hazardous waste, right now the town of Southington gets a grade of F. If you guys are happy with a grade of F, then more power to you. I'm going to another town and I'm sure their grade is not a F. But you should be getting more than one percent participation. You should be holding more than two of these events per day, per, per year. It's very inconvenient and you're causing your residents to store hazardous waste in their houses. I had it for twenty years. And mainly because it's, first of all, I don't even know, I, I left Mark a message. I don't know if he never responded to me. I don't know how much you spend for marketing to let people know, but it can't be very much because most people don't even know that the hazardous, household hazardous waste event took place in November. The only reason why I found out about it is because I was moving and I wanted to get rid of all the house hazardous waste I, I collected for ten or twenty years. But anyway, this woman that I, there's a name of a woman that I, that I gave to you. She can be very helpful. Their town of sixteen hundred people have set up a, a system that I discussed with, with town chairperson. And I said, if you hire, if you appoint someone to head over this household hazardous waste, I'd be more than happy to just discuss with them in the next couple, three weeks, all the information I collected. But the main reason I'm here, by the way, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I want to wish everybody, I can't believe you can't even say it anymore in the stores. It's pathetic. I would say, if we're all those Catholics, I'm not even Catholic, but if I was Catholic, I would, I would strike all these, all these stores until they would say Merry Christmas to you. Because it's, I know when I rang the bell, by the way, I'm glad you guys are ringing the bell on Saturday because, because if you want to know the reason why you're ringing it is because I organized that event for Janet Mellon. Because when she first started her job, I'm going to tell you like it is, she started, when she started that job, John Whitesell was in charge and John Whitesell told her to sit in the basement, don't service any clients and we'll pay you a check. I got involved and she asked me to help fundraise and that's how come the bell ringing service has been today. And if you know Janet, Janet is a person who does get and gets things done and she wasn't willing to sit in that office and do nothing. So I, I made John Whitesell racist and peace, but I cannot believe that he cannot consider that there's, besides the homeless people that are out there, there were some homeless people, there were many working poor that are one paycheck away or divorced or a government shutdown away from losing, losing everything, not having things that, that was in need. And Janet's group services that excellently. I'll take a couple more minutes because the main reason why I came here, and I want to apologize to all the residents of Southington. I feel really bad that twelve years ago, I quit my volunteering in this town of Southington.
Stu, I'm going to give you two minutes. I'm going to give you two more minutes.
All right, two minutes, I know. But you know, I, I'm a little upset about that.
Thank you.
All right, you guys, I'm very upset though. I, I know I'm, I'm long-winded, but I spent thousands of hours volunteering for this town and I never received a penny. In fact, I put some of my own money into it and I, as a courtesy, you had some guy talking for hours, talking nonsense about some library, all I had to do was tell you what they're going to do in the future. And here I, who spent thousands of hours, raised almost a half a million to a million dollars for families in need, for our town students, our, our families, our senior citizens. And the least courtesy, this is my last time, I'm leaving this town and you could at least give me four more minutes. That's all I can ask for, but if you can't, you can't. Because I had asked to be put on an agenda item for that and I know it's a long meeting, so I'm glad you didn't put me on. And I'm sorry to take up any more time, but I am totally pissed and I'm pissed because of this guy right here.
Who?
This guy right here. This guy, a lot of your problems with your town libraries and all the bill, no, I'm telling you.
Stu, I can't, I can't attack somebody from there.
No, I'm not attacking anybody, but I'm telling you, two weeks ago, I went to an ALTA meeting.
I'm the editor.
I went to an ALTA meeting and he, listen.
Okay.
I have, I have records of his, his slandering of me in the bo, in the Board of Finance meeting. He slandered my name and, and your town manager was a town attorney at the time, he had to do an investigation.
Okay, Stuart.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
I understand you're upset.
I'm not upset, I'm pissed.
Okay.
Hey, Val.
This gentleman was the problem for this town. He ran this town into the ground.
Stuart.
That's why our library is a mess. That's why our town hall is a mess.
Stuart, I'm going to stop you now.
Well, that's the truth. If you can't handle the truth.
Stuart, I've tried to be very open for you.
I know, but I'm telling you the truth.
It stops now.
This gentleman, Phil Pomposi was a gentleman.
Stuart, I'm going to hold you. I'm going to tell you, it's done.
Was the reason why I quit volunteer, I stopped volunteering for the town of Southington.
Stuart, we're done.
He, he blasted me.
Stuart, we're done.
He, he called me and then take me out.
We're done.
That's it. This gentleman.
I wish you well, Stuart. Listen to me. Listen to me. Listen, wait, I know. Okay.
All right. Recede. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Stuart. 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 Well, I don't want to call a piece either, but this gentleman, this gentleman bullied me.
All right. Stuart, Stuart, walk away or I'm going to, walk away, please, Stuart.
Anyway, I'm going to get my glass. Where's my glasses? Oh.
Val, Val, candy. Starving over here. Withering away to nothing.
Phil Pomposi, is this on?
Yes, we got you.
We can hear you. Phil Pomposi, twelve fifteen Pleasant Street. Before I get into my prepared remarks, just, and it's about that sewer issue, but you talked about it just for a minute when you started the meeting. And perception is very important. And what came out in the paper today was not something you like to see in this town of Southington. Now, what the whole situation is, I don't know. But Councilman Palmieri made a very good point. You should not do anything about that until we look into this because people are not naive in this town. And this is not the kind of thing that happens in this town. And to basically try to defend it, right out of the box by one of the councilmen here, asking you, "Well, did we do anything legal?", that's not the point. Perception matters and I would not want to sit on the council and be a member of the council with that thing hanging over my head and people thinking, "Well, why did he vote that way?" But anyway, let me get into what I came here tonight for. I came here to talk about this proposal about the sewers on Lanning Street. I was troubled about what I read today in the local paper. I only hope it has nothing to do with what is being discussed here tonight. When I wrote this, I thought you would be voting on it regarding this issue. But I do have a few questions regarding this particular issue. One would be, why would a developer want to spend thousands of dollars extending the sewer line to property that is zoned, is zoned two acre, where a very limited amount of units can be built? Two, why are you, the Republican majority of this council, hell-bent on approving an extension line in front of the property that was designated a no sewer zone? Three, why is there already discussion about building 30 units on a property that is actually zoned for two acres, or we do assume that the approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission is a done deal? I mean, these are the questions that people in this town are asking, especially after this item came out today. And let me expand a bit on that last question. I know some of you have served many years on the planning and zoning, so you know what, you know, I'm talking about. It seems we have a habit of getting zone changes where more and more dense development can be done where it was never intended. Years ago, a zoning map was approved for the town of Southington. The whole intention of that map was for Southington to be developed in the future with a maximum amount of dwellings being built and therefore population contained to a certain amount. But over the years, time and time again, zoning of parcels have been changed to give developers ability to maximize the amount of units on a parcel that was never intended to be developed in that manner. Consequently, as you have seen our town grow, we have traffic jams on Queen Street, traffic jams on West Street, and more and more parcels being developed in this way. Is this what we want for Southington, the future of Southington? And I also have a personal concern about this matter since it's only a half a mile from where I reside on Pleasant Street. And I don't need any more traffic by my house. I can live with the property being developed as it was intended, as two acres. So I urge this council to go down this route. You cannot ask the taxpayers to pay for open space, which was intended to control overdevelopment, and yet continue approving more and more development by chaining zoning plans. So when that does come up in the future, I urge this council not to do this extension because it sends the wrong message to the people of this community. Now, in closing, let me say this. I'm a native of this town, I was born and brought up in this town. And while I do not expect our town to be the Southington it was when I was growing up with 10,000 or 12,000 people, it pains me to see what this town has become. Overdevelopment with no end in sight. Let's try to save what is left of this beautiful town. So again, I urge you to consider this very seriously and not approve something that doesn't have to be approved. The developer knew what he was buying when he bought that property. It was two acres. And when we start continually taking two-acre zoning and zoning it down to accommodate maybe 30 units or so, we've lost the character of this town, definitely.
Thank you, Phil.
We've always, always, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may. Just for the record, I'm not sure the examples that Mr. Pomposi was referring to about rezoning residential parcels for higher density, but in my 10 years on planning and zoning recently, I can't think of one area of town where we have changed the zone from Zone A to a higher density zone, for the record.
Okay, thank you.
I hearken back, maybe 2003 was the last time it happened. 2003.
There's not a single parcel that we've increased the density by changing the zone, Mr. Pomposi.
Okay, thank you very much. Done.
Dawn Micalley, 100 Thunderbird Drive. Same thing, I came out here tonight because I thought there'd be the presentation on the Lanning Street request. So even though I'll come back in January, I just want to still make my remarks this evening. Having heard the presentation back in July, I do believe that this matter is certainly precedent-setting, as we have never, over decades, granted approval to extend sewers into the no-sawer zone, also known as the sewer avoidance area. Yes, we've extended them elsewhere. I'm specifically talking about this zone, which was created by a professional company that we had to hire in order to be in accordance with the state. They worked with our town staff, it was our town staff who actually delineated the various parcels and areas and whatnot that are now in this no-sawer zone. We heard from our staff at that July meeting, I ask all of you who are new to this commission, pardon, council, to read the July 8th minutes and actually, because they're not verbatim, you're going to have to watch as well. Because they did, staff did talk about, they did inform this board and they did talk about capacity and flow levels. And while it gets all very technical, the fact of the matter is, is that there will be an impact, we were told, for our as-yet-even-built wastewater treatment plant. But there was good testimony, if you really listened to our staff at that meeting. And I just want to mention quickly, Keith, you're still here, something that Mr. Hayden cited, it's on page seven, page seven of the July 8th council minutes. The plan has to anticipate that potential and the capacity of the plant has to be such that the town is protected for a very long distance in the future for potential development. That's the reason for the map. So he was talking about the fact that everything was, the no-sawer zone was taking into account the fact that there would be potential development. I agree with Phil Pomposi when you talk about the developer purchased this parcel, there's, yeah, this parcel and knew that it was two-acre zoning. One of the things that I asked this council, I know it's not a mandate, but would you please consider, because this is an unprecedented matter, contacting the neighbors in that area, most especially Dorrell Lane neighbors, to let them know what's involved, whether it's a public hearing or something similar, let them come out and know what's going on. I think it's that big. And I, again, I do believe it is precedent-setting, just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Good evening, Elio.
My name is Elio.
Watching the time a lot tonight, so we're going to be pretty faithful with the time, so.
I cannot use this. I just know that the gentleman spoke for an hour and all of you about, I don't know, sure, understood. I'm here 40 years, 4-0, nobody understood me. I in life here in this country, what think, nobody have to teach me. So they be missing. Secondarily, the compensation, I spent 22 years was a lawyer. About the land business, real estate. And everyone here, you know, like gentlemen over there, Lombardi, when they had to pay for the lawyer for something happened, Mr. Ricciola make a good communication or do Just like that. And a counsel which said, he stayed here, he want to make it very clear, that when I bought a lot, they think I bought. So, never, never exist.
Take your eye out.
Now, there you know people don't lie to me, you lie to the United States, after all. The flag, I think God, believe in God. Because what is that? Mr. Ricciola made a motion to deny the request at the time. The chair motion was passed by not follow Mr. Lantin. And he said, "Mr. Ricciola, I just want to say that I have heard about so many years and I was thankful that John and Mark fill us and educate us on it." Come on, Mark, I consult to so many lawyer judge. I just want to get paid. If you need any information, I got all here. Here's the deed. And here what a man near the, it's a gentleman, he was a lawyer, John G. Donahue, in 1971. He sent the deed home and he said, "There, Mr. Fusciello, includes a fiduciary deed to the property that you purchased from my estate of Christie, Chester Christie. Also, is a certificate of a title to the property. The deed was returned to our office by the town clerk, Madame DiPaolo Jane, after it was record on your production, in Southington land record. We appreciate this opportunity to be of service to you, very truly, Sokolowski Carl Donahue." And no, note, this certificate is issued subject to such facts as an encumbered survey and personal inspection of the premise, will be disclosed as a transfer. You know what that means? 1971. And nobody understand, why don't you say that you hire a lawyer for your purpose or any barriers, Republican, Democrat, because I got a big history. Only I want to get paid and above all, I beg my son to come here. Just a long ago, as you will know now all. And Mr. Ricciola questioned my son, my integrity, what I know, what the hell is going on with this type of government? And words after words, the chairman after chairman, I beg, I stall, I threaten, nobody care. Then you want to know, a terrorist, you created in 1971. Madame, I give you the book, it's not such a thing. Now, I am an enemy, not enemy, I go to town, I believe this follows an engineer, are you an engineer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm go to town.
Elio, the bell went.
Madam, I understand, you know, I'm here for a long time too.
Keep mindful of that.
Above all.
I do too.
I took my land away almost if I know every off the money. First of all.
Elio, we've got to close it down now.
Madam, I understand, I am longer respect you, I know.
And I respect you also.
Our chief and so on, but this chief, he come after me all the time. I try to make a lot of money.
I know. Elio, what I would do, we're going to pass this down, but we're going to have to close your remarks down for today.
Madam, I do refer all of you.
Okay, so let me just tell, no, let me explain.
I was in a chat so many times, okay? I paid a lawyer so much money.
I want to say though.
I want to go there, I'm 82 years old. And the fun of my son, I teach my son how to live in the world and to be educated before I went to school.
Let me do it. Elio, you're not going to make me get up again, are you?
Elio, we're all set.
You know, I, it's another question, look here.
Okay, Elio, we're done.
$175,000 to the chief fireman. And then even appropriate $60,000 to the road.
Okay.
Madam.
Elio.
I respect you. I even barely met my your father long ago.
And I respect you, Elio, but that's why I'm saying we have to close this down.
Nobody does anything, Republican, Democrat, I can mention, when I, January.
Elio, I've been trying to be very respectful.
Thank you so much for your time, we gotta, we're going to have to stop you right now. Sorry.
Thank you, Elio, thank you. What I would say, what I want to say to the council, Elio, what I want to say to the council is.
President Trump was right, the enemy ground like anyone.
Elio.
It's what considered to.
Elio.
I want to finish this, madam.
We have new, we have new council members on this council. Who may not know.
Pay me $200,000 that this year never had.
Elio, we're done.
Well, I respect you.
We're done.
If it happen to you, what you do?
I would respect the chair. I've been, I've been very respectful to you today.
I understand.
Okay. So if anyone has a question about Elio's history on this thing, if you have any questions, see the town manager or the town attorney. You can go right through the whole history from the time he purchased the property till today.
Are you available in the morning?
I've been aware of the manager, Mark Fushaw, in the town hall when he was a deputy. I put everything on paper.
I know.
I know, right along. Answer the question.
We've discussed this over the years, the last 20 years, about 25, 30 minutes.
Okay. Elio, thank you for.
The papers are the same.
Elio, thank you for coming.
Madam.
Thank you. But we have to move on.
I move on, I appreciate when everybody be together. I'm a, I'm a jackass for my family, but not everybody else all around in the life.
All right, we're going to go on. Okay, don't Paul, just, I know, I know, I know. Let's move on to old business. I need action on Lanning Street, anybody?
Motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second? Let's call the vote on this one.
Del Santo.
Yes.
DePaolo.
Yes.
Dietzick.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Morelli.
Yes.
Palmieri.
Yes.
Houlis.
Yes.
Chaplinsky.
Yes.
Triano.
Yes. Action on police department generator bid.
Motion to approve is presented this evening.
I'll second that.
Mike seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. Action on tri-party agreement with Beaton and Corbin.
I'll also make a motion to table.
Yep, second. Second by Paul, Paul Wright?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? New business, tax refunds.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the tax refunds that are in our packet tonight.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Very good, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, we have an appointment tonight, one member of the Ethics Board.
Madam Chair, I would like to submit the name of Nate Palmer for the Ethics Board.
Second. Second. Oh, Paul did. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Finally, item C is the Blatchley Pump Station.
Madam Chair.
And we have the resolution.
I'm required to read this in a record.
Would you read that, please, Mark, for us? Thank you.
Resolution of the Southington Town Council, whereas the Town Council hereby finds that a failure of the Blatchley sanitary sewer pumping station has created a pressing need for public expenditure to protect the public health, safety, or welfare as described in section 712 of the Town Charter. And whereas, the Town Manager has recommended an emergency appropriation of $600,000 to address such sanitary sewer pumping station failure. Now therefore, resolve that pursuant to section 712 of the Town Charter, the Town Council hereby approves an emergency appropriation of $600,000 from the sewer fund, for which emergency appropriation shall not take effect until recommendation by resolution of the Board of Finance. Further resolve, the Town Council hereby declares the town official intent under federal, excuse me, federal income tax regulation, section 1.150-2, that costs of the project may be paid from temporary advances of available funds and that the town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advances from the proceeds of borrowing, yet to be approved in the aggregate principle not to exceed the amount of the projected expenditures, adopted by the Council of the Town of Southington, Connecticut on December 9th, 2019.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And seconded by Jim, did you, I'm sorry, Chris did, okay, very good. Let's take a voice vote on it, please.
Del Santo.
Yes.
DePaolo.
Yes.
Dietzick.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Morelli.
Yes.
Palmieri.
Yes.
Houlis.
Yes.
Chaplinsky.
Yes.
Triano.
Yes, thank you very much. Final order of business, I'm looking for a motion for adjournment.
I made that motion to adjourn.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, thank you very much. Final order of business, I'm looking for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good job, everybody, thank you.
Madam Chairman, on behalf of the administration and all the town employees of which you all